Later, when a variety of rankings were published, I also started to question whether the generous taxes we pay for our schools were being managed correctly and wisely and delivering results. In all the various conversations or online debates, I waited to hear input or perspective from the board or its representatives. During these discussions, I also came to learn of some of the history and internal events in our school's district, the board, and our current superintendent. Again, I waited to hear or receive input from the board or the administration before forming an opinion, but the silence was deafening. This silence concerns me. The board's agenda and decision-making process, regardless of published results or audits, concerns me. The lack of transparency and the fact that the board operates at odds with our community sentiment concerns me. Given that tonight's agenda includes the renewal of our district's current superintendent's contract, the person charged with administering our schools and overseeing its departments, including special services, the person responsible for fostering a positive learning environment in our schools, for delivering results and addressing community concerns, I strongly urge the board to listen to the community it represents and vote no for the renewal of Superintendent Rusk's contract.
Thank you. Next.
Chris Diaz, 20 more terrace. I'm reading eight comments on behalf of the 400 employees of the West Orange School District who have voted in their own poll that they have no confidence in the superintendent and who wish to remain anonymous. First, I do not-- Sorry? I do not feel that we are valued for our efforts, both within the regular instructional time or after-school activities we run. I have personally suffered financially by decisions made by this superintendent. Two, this superintendent has created a climate of fear and intimidation. He has brought in administrators that are not the right fit for our district. He is incapable of earning loyalty from teachers and administrators, so he finds that loyalty by hiring friends to fill administrative positions. It is human nature to not go above and beyond for those who do not value you. This superintendent, his new hire, the assistant superintendent, and principal that he hired that was a board member from the former district can all be lumped into the same category. The initiatives they have been piling on teachers have done nothing to help the students. They look good on paper and add to our already large workload. Our low morale is due to the lack of respect that we are given. They are smoke and mirrors. They care about how the data makes them look so that they can move on to the next district. They need to stop attributing our low morale to years working without a contract. It's not always about the money. We want to be treated how we treat our students and their families with respect and empathy. Three, it's too secretive. It's like he doesn't care about the faculty and students. He has his own agenda, and we are just basically told to do it because you have no choice. Four, I know that in the past with previous superintendents, the morale of the staff was higher. We all felt respected and were acknowledged for what we were doing. Now we are asked to do more and then told it's not good enough. We never feel like we are doing a good job and are always fearful when it comes to speaking up because our positions are threatened. Five, since the appointment of this superintendent, there have been so many initiatives that have been put forth with little to no proper training. It feels like a train out of control. Changes that should have had teacher input are not just approved by people who have not worked with children in years or ever. These changes have impacted the students in a negative way. It makes it difficult to continue on in this environment. Six, I've never felt more stressed and uncertain about expectations. My only happy time is working with students. Seven, he made his intentions clear when he stated at one of his first meetings at West Orange High School, "When I become the next commissioner of education." In my opinion, his actions are not intentioned for the good of the district but to further his own agenda. Eight, we need a superintendent who has established history of leadership and whose previous actions demonstrate their unwavering support for progressive educators and curriculum, special education students and services, and who recognizes the strength of our diverse student body.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Elmonia S. Viney, 186 Forest Hill Road. I've been an educator in high school for 20 years. I'm a former New Jersey Amistad Teacher of the Year for 2006, former Teacher of the Year at my high school in 2016. At first, when I came up here, I was going to read another of the anonymous notes from the teachers. I decided not to. Because I want to put a face to the classroom. I can talk about all the accolades, but I can also tell you I buried four of my students, two from suicide, two from car accidents. I can tell you about the number of times I had to sit in the guidance counselor's office calling DIFIS, finding out that a child's been beat by their father or a mother who sits there in a parent-teacher conference with me and looks at their daughter and says, "I don't care about you." I can tell you about how exhausting it is when I gotta go get money to help feed a kid even though they're on free lunch. I can tell you about the stress every day, not of teaching curriculum, not of telling the kid to sit down, but the stress every day, wondering, "Is this kid gonna come to school?" because of the drama happening in their household. This job is not a job. It's a profession. Many of us could have went into other professions. It could have been lawyers, doctors. I could have went into corporate law, worked with my wife, who makes far more than me. But we do this for something else. We do this for children. We do this for other people. And so when we are on the front lines, you gotta have a general. Your general's supposed to be your superintendent or your principals or whomever. They're the ones that are supposed to put confidence in you. They're the ones that are supposed to not put fear and intimidation in you, but they're the ones that are supposed to boost you up and say, "Go on out there because we see beyond the curriculum, beyond the test. We see what you have to do for these kids." Your district, this district, the one we live in, is just as big as the school district that I teach in. And if you have your people on the front line having low morale and feeling feared and intimidated, then that's not leadership. And as someone that pays a lot of taxes in this district, the last thing I want is my two children coming to school knowing that the teachers here, as much as I love them, feel beat down and defeated. These teachers and these people here deserve more and deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Rachel Gordon, 8 Meeker Street. Last week, the former principal of my public school on the Lower East Side visited after a long absence. Though he had worked overseas for nearly a decade, he was greeted with smiles and hugs by everyone who knew him. Mark had been a founding principal of my school, where he built a community of respect that welcomed the ideas of teachers, parents, and students alike. Mark was a true leader and inspiration, and the culture he fostered survives to this day in my school. I think that we all agree that West Orange Public Schools deserves a culture like this and that we have not achieved one under Mr. Rusk. Consider the recent teacher survey. In response to the question, "Do you feel that the superintendent demonstrates respect for district professional staff?", over four in five responses said no. This isn't the case of a few disgruntled employees. There are some 400 respondents. Eighty-two percent of them feel disrespected by Mr. Rusk. I've repeatedly heard teachers complain about the district's very top-down approach and implementation of programs with little input from the very teachers who have expertise in them. No wonder the morale is so low. Consider our students' parents. Over 270 people went out on a limb and signed a petition asking that Mr. Rusk's contract not be renewed. Perhaps the biggest reason parents gave for signing was, again, respect. One petitioner cited his refusal to engage in productive conversation with parents. Another parent said, "West Orange Schools need and deserve leadership that has vision and respects." That's "Respects" in all cap, the Voices of Concern constituents. It may be too much to expect a leader who we would all greet with smiles and hugs, but at the very least, West Orange deserves a leader who respects the teachers and staff, the parents, and the students. Someone who can make the most of the incredible talent and goodwill we have in this town. I urge the Board of Education to listen to the stakeholders in this community and find a new superintendent. We need a fresh start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Cindy Witi Brown, 24, Coral Circle, West Orange. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of a teacher. I am reading on behalf of Michael Meyer and Kristen Carbone-- I'm sorry-- family that was here, not teacher-- who no longer fear retribution. "We moved out of West Orange in 2017 specifically because of the dismissive, negative way in which our disabled child was denied appropriate classification and access to needed accommodations by the West Orange School Administration. Our experience in our child's first four years of school gave us zero faith that she would get the adequate appropriate education to which she is entitled to in West Orange. And rather than spend eight more years fighting a system which was clearly rigged against her, we chose to the drastic step of moving our entire family out of state to find a school system that would give her appropriate access to education. After only six months in another school system, we have seen marked improvement in our child's access to appropriate accommodations, and therefore, her academic performance has improved markedly. We are 100% certain that by leaving West Orange, we have made a huge improvement in our child's access to learning. This situation is appalling and cannot be allowed to continue in West Orange. And I believe the atmosphere of misrepresentation and denying children the education they are entitled to by law comes from the top-down and can specifically be held to the account of Mr. Rusk. Please find someone better qualified to steward the education of the children of West Orange. Your taxpaying citizens demand and deserve it. Otherwise, I have no doubt that the other West Orange families will be forced to face the impossible decision we did." Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Amber Newsom. I live at 18 Arvern Road. I am reading these comments on behalf of employees at the West Orange School District who wish to remain anonymous. "What he said comparing negotiations to Sandy Hook was so disgusting, I will never forget that. He shows no knowledge of the challenges we face daily, no respect for the teachers, the nurses, or the students. He piles on more and more computer work and evaluations of all staff. Most staff give much more than required time, effort, and personal money to educate and support the students and each other. But all we get in return is more criticism, useless professional development, and lack of concern for the well-being of the staff. Schools are run like businesses. Teachers seem to have lost their passion that was once evident in the district. Too many new initiatives. Curriculum is not meeting the needs of all the students, especially the children that need more support. Very upset with the superintendent. Since here, our educational system has totally gone downhill. He has no regard for teachers' concerns and input. Our test scores have fallen and will continue, especially when elementary schools don't have a reading program to work with. Chromebooks may look wonderful but aren't the answer to helping young minds learn. It's a divide-and-conquer mentality coming from the superintendent's office. Teachers are being pitted against each other. There is no trust, concerns though unheard. I feel his focus has been narrow-minded and self-serving. He's asked a lot of questions regarding our opinions and then held it against those who believed there would be no repercussions. His arrogance has led him to make disparaging comments to us and about us. He's only tried to change the appearance of his attitude and actions when he's received pushbacks of articles made in the news beyond West Orange. Under the leadership of our current superintendent, the supportive and positive environment I love about our district has eroded and been replaced with lack of respect, top-down management with no regard for professional input from the staff, and constant changes with little to no training. Before this superintendent, I enjoyed working in West Orange. I no longer feel treated as a respected professional. Our job has become so micromanaged that it's just stressful and unfulfilling. The lack of a language arts program at the elementary level is baffling. The scope and sequence is interpreted and implemented differently among schools and grade levels, yet interpretations are criticized. Also, so much time has been eliminated from reading time that is critical in elementary grades."
Ms. Newsom, wrap up, please. Time's up.
Okay. Writing was outside the LA block. Now we have 45 minutes to do a lesson and seeing reading groups. We need more flexibility to do what our students need, which is impossible since this superintendent came. We need a leader who respects educators and allows us to use our professional judgment. I truly hope he's not rehired.
Okay, the time's up. Thank you.
Check, check, one, two.
Good evening. My name is Anna Miranda. I live on 8 Maguire Drive. I'm here to represent the Circle of Rainbow Sisters seeking spiritual and wellness connection. On behalf of that group, we have a financial literacy program for teenagers as well as high school students. And I'm here to applaud the relentless support and responsiveness we've received from Superintendent Rusk. He's been available to collaborate on our financial literacy program, not merely with his words but in action. He's attended our workshops to encourage our teams. He has delegated and ensured follow-through on networking the program into the schools through communication to parents and the internal teams. He has facilitated communications with other principals so we could attend and present the program to various middle schools. Overall, he's been extremely responsible and reliable to us. We applied the same effort in the Oranges and the East Orange superintendent's office and did not get the same responsiveness as we have from Superintendent Rusk. He's a model superintendent for the kids, and for that, we applaud his service and continued tenure as the superintendent of the West Orange School System. Thank you.
Thank you.
Check, check, one, two.
Good evening again. So I wanted to start fencing at the high school as a sport. And as again I said, it's something that is very underrepresented in this town. It is not an extracurricular that is present anywhere outside of school or in school and not in our gym classes either. Fencing is a sport that really emphasizes on focus, which is essential in every aspect of life. Each point scored requires planning and thinking. Not only can fencers increase sharpness and key motor skills, but it's an excellent way to relieve the stress that can be accumulated in just being a high school student. In our town, again, we do not have a fencing program, and it would be very beneficial to our town and to our students. As per coaching, there are people outside of school that are very willing to help because there's not a teacher at the high school who could currently do these kind of things. And another statistic I wanted to share is that 35% of high school female fencers go to NCAA schools as college freshmen. So thank you again.
Thank you. Next.
Hi again. My name is Lexi Pavone. I'm a special education teacher at Kelly Elementary School. And I have worked in the district since 2010. We feel the need to express positivity where there is so much negative. My previous teaching years, West Orange did not have a phonics program that was consistent throughout all of the elementary schools. Some schools did not have a phonics program at all. I'm speaking on behalf of the Orton-Gillingham team. Ten teachers, not anonymous, just to name a few. Kelly Clancy, Diana Carbonito, Mary Ann Macarino, Justine O'Grady. Their names can be found. We're thankful for the opportunity to be given these courses through Fairleigh Dickinson University. Orton-Gillingham has a multi-sensory approach to teaching decoding with phonics fluency and comprehension to children who struggle with reading. It was under Mr. Rusk's support and direction for teachers to be certified in this valuable program. Orton-Gillingham has been life-changing for us as educators to see the impact it can have on struggling readers. Mr. Rusk is working on closing the reading gap for our struggling readers, and we believe is moving West Orange students in a positive direction. After assessing my language-learning disabled students this month, I've seen my struggling readers jump four to five reading levels since September by implementing this approach. Again, the program that was brought to our district by Mr. Rusk, not to mention the continued support he has given our team, those teachers, not anonymous, all of the help that we need, knowing how tiring and demanding the certification can be to obtain. We continue to thank him for this. This program has made us all better teachers and has changed our lives as educators. In addition to this program, our teachers have been given the foundations to use for phonics, which is consistent throughout the district. In addition to the language arts area, my colleagues were given training in the Everyday Math Program, specific for just special education educators. This is the first I've seen in my years in West Orange a training designed just for special education students. It was time that special education students and educators were given these resources and training in order to reach our struggling population. These positive changes were all under Mr. Rusk's direction as our superintendent. We feel the need to give credit where credit was due. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Diana DeCasta, and I'm a technology integration specialist for grades K through 6. This is my 17th year in the district-- I'm sorry, 17th year in education, third year in this district. I wanted to share my experiences that I've had with Mr. Rusk so the board can make an informed decision about the renewal of the superintendent contract. I've had the opportunity to work closely with Mr. Rusk on an initiative to provide our elementary staff support with integrating technology in the classroom in a meaningful way. When I say meaningful, I mean one that breaks traditional practices and pushes teachers past comfort zones. It basically calls teachers to ban the average and design to the edges when implementing lessons to make learning relevant for our students. While I, along with the tech team, which is comprised of about 10 teachers from across this district, have become the face of the initiative, I would like the board and the community to know that this initiative would not exist without the support and vision of our superintendent. Decisions were made collaboratively and with careful thought about what is best for students. What I'm about to share is feedback that was received from our staff after professional development sessions from this fall regarding this initiative. The message I wanted-- no one is average is a powerful one. As educators, we need to use the tools available to reach every student and empower them to teach as well. Thank you so much for this workshop. I'm dying to integrate technology in a meaningful way with my students. I feel more confident in using tools and allowing myself to explore and make mistakes to help my students become digital learners. This workshop exceeded my expectations. I was made to feel very comfortable about something that is so foreign to us. I'm looking forward to using all that I learned in my class, and this adds a whole new level of excitement to my day-to-day. These testimonials only tell part of the story. Sentiments are translated into increased participation in our digital professional learning network, #GoToWorld, where you can see teachers showcasing their work and sharing it with others in the profession outside of West Orange. Unknown to most staff, this excitement and renewed energy in our profession is what our superintendent has been facilitating. It is for this reason that I'm here tonight, to show my support for Mr. Rusk's leadership, perseverance, and vision that he has shared with West Orange Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Joanne Palera, principal at Kelly Elementary School. I'm here to share my personal experiences with Mr. Rusk. I was taught to try to do what I can, but I was also taught from a very young age that I should always do what I must. So from a personal standpoint, I wanted to tell you about my first interaction with Mr. Rusk. When I first met him, I introduced myself by saying, "I'm Joanne Palera, I'm the principal at then Pleasantale School. I need to take some time off because I have to have some cancer surgery." His response was, "How can I help you?" He was very understanding about my surgery and my treatment schedule, checked in frequently to be sure that all was well. Made sure that at the beginning of the school year that my wackadoodle idea for making sure that I had my treatments and I could still come to work, worked out. During the 2015-16 school year, when our school was being renamed for the Astronaut Kelly Brothers, I had the unique opportunity of working very closely with Jeff, organizing, planning, and attending to a myriad of details for a most important event, an event that they don't prepare you for in principal school, I might add. I found Jeff to be patient, organized, willing to work alongside of me, so much so that when it was over, I called Liz Hughes. When she asked why I was calling, I said I was having withdrawal symptoms. I had never worked so much with a superintendent in all of my years of education, and I've worked for West Orange for over 30 years. Looking at our accomplishments as a district under Jeff's tenure at the elementary level, our teachers were saying that our students needed more systematic approach to phonemic awareness in our language arts program. He heard that. We're in the second year of implementation of foundations. We're closely monitoring our students' progress, of our young readers. We're monitoring three times a year with Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessments, keeping records. We've departmentalized our 4th and 5th grade, which has lessened the load on our 4th and 5th grade teachers, making them more expert in their subject area. Differentiated PD. Our elementary schools have been given technology tools, not hand-me-downs because for a long time I felt that the elementary schools were the land of the misfit toys. We got leftovers from the high school, middle school, but now we got new, brand-new, and we're ready to roll.
Dr. Bligh, please wrap up. Time's up.
Okay. I'm wrapping up. Okay. Our nurse, Nancy Feldman, has several times asked for assistance. Jeff has always honored his word to help. And that's--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bligh.
Ron Bligh, I am the director of athletics, and I'd like to say that I'm very, very proud to work in this district. And I don't care what anyone says. We have a fantastic district here, and I'm very, very proud to be a part of it. I'm here tonight to support Mr. Rusk. Mr. Rusk, I think you should know-- I have never known a superintendent that puts in the hours that he does. He's a diligent worker, here all the time, attends just about every possible event he can. And you know, I've heard a lot of people come up here tonight and speak anonymously. Takes a lot of courage to come up to this mic tonight, no matter what side you're on. But I won't come up here and speak anonymously about anything. I'm gonna speak from my heart. Mr. Rusk is a man that holds you accountable for the job that you do. And if you can't take that or understand that, you may have difficulty, okay? I like to deal with straightforward people. Mr. Rusk has always told me what he expects from me, and I've always tried to live up to the standard that he projects for me. And I, in my opinion, he is an excellent superintendent. I support him fully. And again, I just say with athletics, he's a superintendent that realizes the importance of extracurricular activities and the athletic department. I could come up here tonight and I could read statements from our coaches. He's very well-liked by every coach in the district, okay? But you know what? I don't think there's any validity or integrity in anonymous charges. Have the courage to come up here and speak. And again, I'm in favor of renewing his contract, and I hope we can find a way to work this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I always have to do this. Good evening, Rob and I Sirloz, 22 Yale Terrace. I would just like to say that if people felt that they were not in fear of retribution, they would speak non-anonymously. I stood at this podium eight months ago tonight and shared with you my concerns about Superintendent Rusk. Rutzke. At the time, I submitted to each of you, not Ken, copies of over 200 signatures of community members who were asking then that his contract not be renewed. My comments ended with the following. I do not know Mr. Rutzke personally, so what I've shared with you tonight is not a personal criticism, but rather a criticism of his approach as the superintendent of our schools. I do not wish him harm, and I still welcome an opportunity to discuss these concerns with him, should he be interested. But given all that I have experienced directly, as well as being witness to, I do not think Mr. Rutzke is the right fit for our community. I'm still waiting to hear a response from Mr. Rutzke, or from any of the board members. I have to be honest, I'm not entirely comfortable with suggesting that someone not be rehired. And I say this to let you know that this is not a knee-jerk reaction, nor is it merely a defensive stance for being slated and disrespected by him over and over again over the last three years, mostly in your presence. This is certainly not something I take lightly. If we were in year one of Superintendent Rutzke's contract, and coming before you to share these concerns, I could see a rational response from the board to say, "Okay, Rocky, year one, let's consider what has been shared, let's give him some time to address these concerns, and work toward improvement." You know, let's take stock and learn from our mistakes, the important lessons our children learn as they travel through this wonderful school district. The problem, of course, is that this is not the first time, it's not the fifth time, it's not the 10th time. I have been coming to this podium to share my concerns fairly regularly since January of 2015. We are far past the time for rookie mistakes, we are no longer at the beginning of a learning curve. It is clear to me, as it is to the many people throughout the district, some of whom are here tonight, that this is the way Mr. Rutzke runs a school system. And his management style, impulsive, authoritarian, intolerant of difference of opinions, is completely contrary to what we, parents, taxpayers, teachers, and staff want in a superintendent. While I'm honestly happy to hear that a few people in the district have had positive experiences, and I hope they are true, as someone who has been regularly attending these meetings, in my informed opinion, Mr. Rutzke has not demonstrated at all that he has considered much of anything that has been brought before you here over the last three years. We have elected you as our voice, trusting you to respond to our concerns. Clearly, this superintendent refuses to do so, and so you must. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to reread my remarks, for the record. David Allen, 14 Orange State. My name is David Allen, and my son is in the fourth grade at Gregory School. I have a Master of Education degree from Harvard University, and I've been a science teacher in an independent middle school and high schools for the past 15 years. While I'm a private school teacher, I'm the product of a public school education, and I'm proud to send my son to West Orange Public Schools. I'm speaking today to ask the board not to renew Superintendent Rutzke's contract. I don't know Superintendent Rutzke personally, and I bear no specific grudge against him. However, I would like to speak about the role of the superintendent as the educational leader and totem setter for our community. Mr. Rutzke's been superintendent since before my son entered first grade, and in that time I've seen vigorous debates about testing, recess, teacher contracts, strategic planning, and many other issues related to teaching and learning in our schools. I had a recent Facebook conversation with Sandra Mordecai about some of my concerns, and she responded by telling me why Superintendent Rutzke was not responsible for each one. It made me realize that the board specifically views Mr. Rutzke as a certain kind of manager. Whether he's been effective as a manager, I'll leave to others to discuss. But the superintendent of schools is much more than a manager. It is essential to see the superintendent position as a true leader and figurehead for our district, and it is appropriate to have high expectations for a superintendent who can set a tone and culture that values our teachers and learners, and who views teachers and families as allies, who care about our kids and want what's best for them. Someone who, through statements and actions, demonstrates a progressive vision of student engagement and love for learning. In the past two years, I've seen superintendents in surrounding towns, including Livingston, Montclair, and Soma, get out in front of tough issues by taking public stands in support of the needs and best interests of their students, and I've been continually disappointed not to see similar proactive statements of support from our district. Our super should clearly love, value, and enjoy kids, and always have their back. Our super should be an activist and advocate for our students and teachers. Our super should promote the having of wonderful ideas. I don't know if Mr. Rutzke personally celebrates the complex lives of our kids, and that's a problem. Our super should work hard to generate a climate in which real thinking, learning, playing, socializing, real childhood is celebrated. I ask the board to recognize that superintendent of schools is more than a managerial job. If the board elects not to extend Mr. Rutzke's contract, then we'll get the opportunity to find a superintendent that families at West Orange deserve, someone who can reset relations with families and teachers, set a better tone, and be a stronger advocate for our kids. I urge the board not to miss this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi there, my name is Thomas Volsho, 40 Overlook Avenue. I have two children in West Orange schools. I've watched the deterioration for the past three years. It boils all the way down to the morale of kindergartners. You can see the, I mean, I'm just watching, like, the, over time, you can see the kind of faces as they progress from kindergarten to first grade to second grade, that the morale trickles down. And it's authoritarian, I mean, you can kind of tell, you can see the way that the teachers are very fearful, and when teachers are fearful in the way they do their job, that's going to create one of the worst possible learning environments you can possibly have. And Mr. Rutzke, my own personal experience with him is asking about like a recess policy, to which I was told by the principal that one existed and that she followed the district policy. I called Mr. Rutzke's office four times, no response. So I said, "Hey, why don't I call the mayor?" I guess, I'm from Connecticut, I don't know how the New Jersey school system works, and apparently superintendents are like gods, so, I was told, "You should be afraid of the superintendent," but I'm not. What I am afraid of is the authoritarian system, where I have to call a mayor to put pressure on him to return my phone call, for him to call me back and say, "Oh, I don't have the policy in front of me," and then the call back and say that there is no policy. That's not, and I've heard many other stories, and I think everybody here has heard enough stories tonight, to vote no confidence in Mr. Rutzke. So, that's just the way it is, and I thank you for your time, I won't take it all. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Ann Aliyamed, 63 Woodland Avenue. I'm here to support Mr. Rutzke. I want to say that the man that I know is the man that gave me a chance. He gave me the opportunity to grow, and he gave me the confidence that I would be okay after my husband's passing. He sees me for me and my potential, and not for the bull in the china shop that others thought I was as a parent advocate, and as a mother of six classified students. This superintendent supports our classified students. The man that I have had interaction with is not the man that most of the people here have gotten up and talked about. Even though I wish I could say that I'm that special, I know that there are more people like me that have a positive interaction with Mr. Rutzke. There has not been a time that I have needed to talk to him or seen him that he has said "No." There is not a time that I came to him with an idea and he told me it was crazy. He has always been there for me, he is there for our students, he is there for this town, he has made things so much better, and he has hired the level that is expected of everyone from principals down to students in this district. So I implore you all to please vote yes, and not put us into turmoil, looking for someone that cannot fill this man's shoes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Roberg, and I am a vocal music teacher at West Orange Schools, here for 16 years at the high school, and in my fourth year at Liberty. Upon my 16th year at the school, I had an unfortunate accident at school, and sustained permanent and significant injuries. While I was out recovering, our former superintendent, without a conversation, involuntarily moved me to the basement of Gregory, down many stairs, which I could not do. I was incredulous. Mr. Rutzke came in a very short time after, and was put in a unique and difficult situation to find a solution to this problem. I must say that Mr. Rutzke listened to me, he cared what happened to me, he explored, he researched, and found a workable solution for me. He also followed up frequently to see how I was doing. He knew that not only had I sustained these injuries, but it was a traumatic change in terms of my career. Beyond that, Mr. Rutzke has always had an open-door policy. He has never turned me down when I have needed to speak with him. I happen to have a very profoundly disabled child, where he has also shown his care and his concern about me as an educator, who is providing for the students of West Orange. This is a man that cares. This is a man who is there. He's always willing to talk. He always comes to my concerts. Imagine that, your superintendent coming to a concert, or the musical that you've spent two months, every day after school and on weekends. Comes to both performances? Did you swear that you were there, right? That's almost unheard of. You know, it's not easy to get up here and just, you know, I'm not anonymous, I'm going to wind it up. But I have to live with myself. My father taught me to have integrity, and as a wise person said, "There's your story, there's my story, and there's more in the middle." Let's use the wisdom of Solomon. I support Mr. Rutzke 100%, and I thank him.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next.
Derek Geltzer, 18 People Did The Road, I'm also representing my mother's house, 25 One Eighth Avenue. This is basically strictly business, this is not personal, Mr. Rutzke, so I just want you to understand that between my mother and myself, I pay $35,000 a year in taxes, and 60% to 65% of it goes to the school system. You know, all you guys are writing, none of you are looking at me, this is kind of disrespectful, but, you know, and I think we deserve better than mediocrity. Right now, and I'm a business guy, so I judge on performance, but you guys are academics, so we judge on grades. What would you give Mr. Rutzke for his? I think generously, I'd give him a C. When our par scores are equal with Orange, New Jersey, after he spent well over a million dollars to upgrade our systems and to teach the test, we ended up with equal with Orange, and our peers, Montclair and Soma, have outperformed us by 33%. I look at it this way, is that why are we in the top 20 of cost per student and have mediocrity? Why must we settle for mediocrity? He's had three years to make things better, things have not gotten better. Everybody said wonderful, nice things, he showed up, he's there, but we judge on performance. If you used an accountant, would you use a C accountant, who just did okay in taxes? How about your mechanic, would you use a C mechanic? Or worse yet, a doctor, a C-level doctor? No, you always want to go for the best. Well, right now, in West Orange, we pay top-dollar in taxes per student, but we do not have top-dollar performance, right? I do not tolerate mediocrity from my kids, from my family, from my friends, why do I have to tolerate it from the town? When you think about it, I'm paying $3,000 a month in taxes, $2,000 of it's going to your schools, and I'm getting a C performance? Please, it's time for a change. I implore all of you, just step up. It's not easy, you're going to take time with your family, from your friends, from your life, in getting a new super, but you all signed on for the job. You all asked these people for money, donations, and time for campaigns. You're here now, make a change. We can do better. We are West Orange, we deserve better. I'm a lifelong resident, and I expect better out of you, all of you, okay? You too, Mr. Rutzke, and I know you're not looking up at me, and you haven't looked up at anybody, it's incredibly disrespectful, all right? Thank you, but I implore you, we can do better. Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Megan Brill, 1 Oak Crush Road. As you know, I sat in your spot for quite a few years, and I had a superintendent that I didn't like at all, and that was a really tough decision for all of us to make at the time, so I do not envy your position at all. But I do want to, I guess, share my experience with you, and a reflection of what I've seen, being, you know, still having a kid in district and watching all of this happening. We, for the past four years, we spent three of those four years without an assistant superintendent, without a proficient one. We finally have, you know, Ms. Mendez that is sitting here taking notes as everyone speaks about everything, and she's here at almost every meeting. So we have an assistant superintendent, Jeff doesn't have to do that job anymore. But for three years, he was saddled with that responsibility, on top of all the other real superintendent stuff that he had to do. The second thing that we have behind us now is our demographic study, that we know we don't need another school, we know that we can move forward with the buildings that we have, with the classroom space that we have, which is a huge hurdle that we got over. The other thing that we have in place now is preschool, we have a safe spot for those kids, and that building that is working out fine. I'm sure there's glitches that I don't know about, but I'm sure it's nothing about moving those kids back into our existing building. That was a big deal, I was trying to find, we spent, you know, tons of time looking for space to put our preschool, so that we could figure out how to increase class size to put more classes in our building. The other thing is, all of our union contracts are now settled. You know, the time that it takes to actually get that done is huge, and I don't think you can say that the teacher's contract, which was the longest-standing contract that it took, rests with Jeff. I think that that's all of your responsibility, and everyone that sat and negotiated those contracts. You can't, you can't in all conscience blame it on Jeff. The other thing is that, so now, all these things are done, and you're able to move forward as a district and work on curriculum, and work on, you know, class sizes, and work on the things that you need to do, but instead, if you don't renew his contract, you're going to spend the next year and a half finding a search firm, and I went through that, three times, we found, you know, had to hire a superintendent, had to hire a search firm, then you have to figure out what the, what the application's going to say, and then you're going to spend a year or six months interviewing and advertising interviewing, you know, candidates, and you may end up, you know, in a worse spot than we are now. I'm not saying that you should ignore all these people, because I don't think that you can, and I know that you want to, that this is a hard decision. But I think that there's a way that you should be able to negotiate with this superintendent, figure out a way to move the district forward, but not implode it, which by not having a superintendent in place, you can see, this is all that anyone's talking about now.
Mr. Brill, time's up.
Okay. Thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next.
Laura Lab, Cunningham Drive. Like Meg and I two sat where you did. I sat there for 10 years, I sat there for 11 years, 21 years. I don't know what's wrong with me, but I did it. I don't know what's wrong with me, but I did it. You know, unlike any other sitting body, the Board of Education is the judicial, the executive, and the legislative branch of government. The town council, legislative only. You guys have it all. We negotiated a contract in good faith. I don't know what this board is doing. This is the second, if not the third, time. It's on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, it's on, make up your mind and do your job, okay? Whatever your decision is, move it, because you are ripping apart this community because you are wackling. Own your decision and just move forward.
Oh my god.
We know, as board members, the things that the public doesn't know that superintendents do. When a student is in the hospital in the middle of the night, and our superintendent is there with that family, we know that, they don't know that. When a child has cancer, and our superintendent creates an amazing program so that child, when he's not well enough to come to school, is part of that classroom experience because of his innovation, we know that, they don't know that. When the contract is settled, and there's discussion, well, when is the retro pay gonna be? And this superintendent says, those people get their retro pay when the end of the summer, before the summer starts. We know that. Yes, it was an amazing fee to provide retro pay within four weeks, not the four months that some people said it will take. We know that. He wanted to make sure they go home with the retro pay for the summer. We know that, they don't know that. When sick days are requested from the staff to help their colleagues, all of those requests that are put out by the union president are approved by the superintendent. We know that, they don't know that. We also know, when people donate sick days, and if they're making, for instance, $30,000 a year, and you have an old time where there's hundreds of days built in, we, as a district, lose money because the people who are paid at a higher level are donating to somebody who doesn't make that money. But he approves that because that person needs that help. We know that, they don't know that. This past weekend, I kept reading things about the sports teams, and you know, I was never a sports person, but what I do know is five of the eight coaches were hired under this superintendent. And this past weekend, step team of wrestling, congratulations, Ronnie, all kinds of things, well, Stefan was here before, but five of the eight varsity coaches, as Mr. Bly or Mr. Piggatana will tell you, I'm sorry, I just butchered your name, I'm so sorry. I suppose Coach Pip. Okay, but we know that. Use the knowledge that you have, and again, how in the world do you negotiate a contract and then don't bring it to the table? I don't know what games this board is playing, but get together, because you are ripping apart this district, this community. And again, there's so many things...
Ms. Lab, finish up, time, time.
Okay, you left a little bit of time.
Again, I will close. I've been here for 21 years, if I took two seconds too long, I do apologize to the community. But again, do the job you were elected to do, and stop playing games.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Tess Rorro, I live at 24 Hutton, it looks like there's no one behind me, and I will make it nice and short, 'cause I'm all hungry and tired, I'm sure.
Can you repeat, excuse me, can you repeat your name again?
Sure, Tess, T-E-Z, R-O-R-O, and my dress is 24 Hutton.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So first, you know, I'm really thankful to know that I live in a district where people show up for important meetings, and I'd like to thank all the parents and everyone concerned who came here to share their thoughts, concerns, and appreciations. And I'd like to applaud the superintendent, because I can't imagine it being easy to sit there and listen to everything here, that takes bravery, so thank you for that. So, all I'm gonna say is, you know, we've had three years of data, right? So when we're hired for a role, there are expectations and there are performances, and I'm sure you guys have some data there. And, you know, throughout the three years, I'm sure you've heard information from different parties, similar to what you've heard today on both sides. So, all I ask is that you look at the data that you have so far in the last three-plus years, and really consider what you've heard today in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, Xavier Fitzgerald, principal at Edison Middle School. I'll start off tonight, and I won't need someone to yell "time" at me, with just one very simple statement, I realize as an administrator that I am as popular as my last known. I know where this district was 13 years ago, I know where it was five years ago, and I know where it is today, because I lived it. I lived it when I first walked into Edison Middle School as a 34-year-old principal trying to find out exactly what I need to do in a community like West Orange. And Jerry Tarnow said it best, he said to me, Xavier, if you can make it in West Orange, you can leave here and go anywhere in the world and be a principal and be successful, because you'll know how to navigate the politics of West Orange. When I look at this, and I've worked with Jeff, and I've worked with him side by side, and I'll tell anybody out here, I don't agree with everything that Mr. Ruski says, I'll be the first one to tell you that, but I respect what he has to say. And at the end of the day, he's made me grow as a leader in this district to understand that everything in my, that comes out of my mouth is not necessarily the right thing, but he has the leadership, he has the experience, and he has the wisdom, but he also has my respect enough to sit me down and say, this is what you need to say and why you need to say it, and let's not have this go back, back in the back direction. I respect anybody that can do that. I'm pretty much straight-up person, anybody that knows me knows, I'm black and white, I tell it like I see it, and a lot of people don't like that. They say they'd like to hear the truth, but when someone finally tells you the truth, that's a problem. The truth is, is that Jeff has grown this district in four years that I've been under as a supervisor, as a superintendent. And I have no qualms about standing at this podium and saying that I support Jeff Ruski for whatever reasons his contract is in question. I was surprised that I'm getting texts about this conversation, so I apologize for my dress, 'cause normally I would come in my super top. But I came tonight the way I am because I felt that it was important that this community understands that Edison represents the microcosm of what West Orange truly, truly is, from its demographics, to its ethnicity, to its culture, to its bone. I'm looking at parents that have sat in front of me, Dr. Russell, Paula Ely, Megan Brill, Duarte, I call you out name by name. Simpson, Blaine, I can call you out name by name and say, you know what this district was, and you know where this district is. Don't let politics play this game. Thank you.
Alright, my name is Cynthia Cumming. I live at 58 Valley Way, been a parent in the school district, not anymore, my kids are grown. I am also an employee of the school district. And I was very hesitant to get up, because I too know what it is like to be bullied online by anonymous people, and it has gone on for years, and it hasn't stopped in this town, and I rather imagine it's not going to. My concern to the board is, are you gonna pay attention to anonymous polls? You know, we are, people that wanna hide and not come out and use the excuse of, I'm afraid for my job, when what you have to do is you have to decide on the future of a man and on the future of where the school district is going. I too, just like Xavier, knows where it was a couple of years ago and where it is now, and it's better. And I don't think that it's fair to not want to see somebody's contract renewed just because you don't like him. And what are you going to do if he does get his contract renewed? Are you gonna all come out in peace and harmony and love and be willing to work with the board because you didn't get that your way? You can laugh, and you can cough, and you can scoff, but I'm gonna tell you right now that you're not giving the time to change, that we need to see as a district. We're in a position now to see where things are gonna go. Things are put in place. I have eight pages of typewritten notes at my house about all the things that have gone on, all the work and the initiative that have been done in this district for the past year alone. And I would like to know, you know, what are you guys gonna do? Laura's right, you have got to make a decision, it's not fair. I'm brokenhearted, reading posts online on local Facebook pages, and the words that are spoken, and the accusations that are made, and the lack of truth that is out there for a lot of it. You guys, you have to take your stand, and remember what it's gonna be like if you don't renew his contract and give him a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Windale Simpson. First, I'd like to say to the board president, under Robert rules of order, if I should go up a little bit, I ask for a little leeway.
I've been giving that all night, so I can continue with you.
Secondly, I would like to support the young lady that came up here requesting that you consider fencing for a sport. I ask that the board look into that and see what may be the parameters that is necessary or the percentages of how that works under Title IX or whatever, that would make that a reality for the students that are interested in that. I'm very surprised tonight how we have all these individuals out, or these parents or residents, out here, when there's been so many issues in this town, and they don't come out. It only comes out when it's self-serving. They don't come out for the kids. And I find that, to me, the parents or the adults are the biggest problem, and the kids, the litmus for the kids is higher than that of the adults in this town. Now, there was one resident that spoke, and, or I think it was the music teacher, and she said, you have two sides and then it is in the middle. Well, the reality is what's in the middle, and that's the politics that play, and that each one of the board members are associated some kind of way, you all, that's how it works, okay? So you're tied some kind of way, and you're pushing some kind of agenda for some of the group in town. Secondly, you have a situation where you bicker all the time, and it makes no sense. You're not, in my book, it's not the best example that you're setting for the kids. With Mr. Ruski, I've had both, as people have shared, I've had both encounters. Yes, he's not perfect, I'm not perfect, but I will say that I always found this door open when I needed to speak with him. I could walk in, sometimes I walked out with a handshake, other times, we were both frustrated, and we agreed to disagree, and we kept it moving. That's life, okay? So, I don't know, when they talk about individuals being afraid of their job, is it that, are they afraid of, did he set a new level standard, and maybe they're not meeting that standard, and so therefore you fear of your job? Or is it that he's not implementing change management in a way that's appropriate for them? So I think change management is an issue too. I also feel, knowing the players, that he has inherited a lot of issues from previous superintendents, and that's not fair to hold him to one term. The other thing is, I say them out of time, so I'll wrap it up quick, is that I also feel that when it comes down to it, we have to push all aside and do what's right for the children. And that is, we had Cavanna, we had Jimmy Leo, and now we have him, and he's a paranoid, and all of these special education problems, and for correction, I don't like to say special education, kids, children who learn differently. These problems have been carried over to him because they existed years ago when my kids had to deal with some of the issues. And in closing, I wanted to ask Mr. Albert, you said that you abstained to the minutes for 2017. Being that, I'm assuming because you weren't here, or you didn't come into the board till 2018, so does that mean that you're gonna abstain from voting because you were not part of his time here? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
John Lanton, 54th Arcs Road. I wanted to echo some of the sentiments that Mr. Simpson just spoke about. Being a parent of two sons that went through the school district, I'm looking at what's going on in our town, I still watch the meetings, don't come as often, matter of fact, I haven't been to one in a long time, but as a resident, a taxpayer, a dad who had two children go through the district and benefited enormously, one was a jock and one was an artist, and they both have done extremely well in their personal lives. For those of you that know me, it's always been about the kids, and a lot of the things that I'm seeing are what I call pre-existing conditions. Some of the teachers that are here, some of the administrators that are here, some of the people that spoke tonight, we need to have a reality conversation in this town, and it needs to stop. Some of you sitting up there, you're aligned with groups and things of that nature, people came up with scripts tonight, I don't need a script. When Mr. Ruski first came here, I went and introduced myself to him, and I told him who I was, and I asked him if he wanted to be a great educator or a great superintendent, and he gave me the right answer, he said educator. And I brought a wide variety, no one knows, to him personally, of a variety of serious pre-existing conditions in this school district. And Mr. Ruski, regardless of what happens, as a father, as a man, I wanna say to you tonight, thank you, because you addressed each one of them, you gave it your word that you would, and you did some of them over and beyond what I had expected you to do. Some of them took longer than I expected, but I wanna thank you again. You had met with me and parents, and some of you here, people have taken their children out of the school district, not because of Jeff Ruski, but the stuff that is going on in our classroom, the things that our children were experiencing, especially boys of color. So we wanna talk tonight, let's get together as a town and have some reality dialogue about what really goes on in the classroom in this town. Let's have some serious conversation, because my children lived it. And so if you guys wanted, some of you that just got here, these things are precondition, and you're getting involved with people who have been playing these games on the blog site and social media, hiding behind lollipop and candy cane, wanna have talk, let's come out. I'll talk to you, I'm John Lanton, let's sit down and have some dialogue. To the board, I'm very disappointed in you as parents, as elected official, you got a board member that can't vote, you got one that abstained, those mean no votes, okay? You got people flipping and flopping back and forth to make a decision. Stand up, be a man, be a father, be a person, set an example for our kids. You got board members behind the scene, I was a renter, I wish you would tell me that I'm nobody because I'm a renter, my mom and dad were renters. All of you sitting in here, I'm quite sure none of you inherited a home, including the person that says it. You guys need to stop and start making decisions about our children. You're fighting against each other, and it's all a personal game. And for all of you that know me, I took my sons out of the arms program because I thought it was discriminating against other children the way it was done. Jeff Ruski came here, and he has provided more opportunity, but some of you have personalized it because you want your own children to benefit it, and it's not about you, it's about all of the children in this school district, and it needs to stop. The foundation of every state is the education of its youth, and all of you sitting up there as elected officials, you need to set an example for our children and stop the nonsense.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Hello. You won't say you can't hear me. My name is Richard Groves, I'm at 41 Yale Terrace, and I've been a resident of West Orange 20-plus years, and have seen four or five superintendents go and come in this town. I don't normally come out, my daughter's no longer in the system, but the reason I came out, because I started getting calls about what's going on presently. came out, because I started getting calls about what's going on presently and is reminiscent of when my child was in the system. Politics, people talk about integrity, you have no integrity if you're not for the kids, bottom line. We have other people who have other agendas here that are not about the kids. Each time I've ever come out, it was regarding the children. I actually had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Ruski because I wanted to get his perspective. I talked to other parents in the town to get their perspective as well. Here's what I found out. My child was in, going to school, gifted child. And my thing was back in the day about that HAP program and all these programs that were here and how people got into the programs. My child was told, at one of the teachers, that she was too sensitive to get into the program. That's the first thing. My child now is, she graduated, I took her out of this system later on because I got some other teachers telling her that she wasn't, math was an issue for her. I have a child, a straight A student up to that point. Now, my real point here is that it's not about the superintendent all the time, because these issues have existed for 20-plus years. It's about the people that are teaching our kids. You guys want to focus on the one person that's the most visible when the people in the classrooms are the ones doing the work. And I'm not saying all of them, someone do some great work, my child was benefited from that, right? So she goes to the high school and she's gifted and they're in one grade, they had her teaching her at sixth grade math when she was on the seventh grade level. Long story short, we took her out of the system. My child was sent to Jamaica Henry. My child graduated cool out of from Jamaica Henry and got the highest award, the head's award, as a senior coming out of there. She is now at Yale. Now, she could have come out of here too, but they weren't doing the right thing. It had nothing to do with the superintendents, the people that are teaching her. If you guys, it's like playing basketball with a ballplayer. You can have a coach on the sidelines telling your team what to do, but if they don't listen to what's being done, they don't win. They don't play well and they don't play together. And a lot of you up here don't play together. I know this because I have a lot of people in prison who know what's going on behind the scenes. So my point here today is that you do have to give people a chance. Some of the things are pre-existing conditions, right? And sometimes you can't kill the messenger because you don't like the message, because you have your own agenda. And I know many of you up here, some people are older, that are not new, but some of the older people up here. So all I'm asking is if you give this man a chance to do what he has started doing, because I have a list of things that he has done that have been beneficial for the town and our kids. I've not heard anything about, I've heard a little bit about that, but everyone's talking about the one little thing, someone's feelings are hurt, the teachers are feeling like, oh, he's making us do lesson plans. Let's get over it. We need to have a conversation about what's really going on in our town and how our children can benefit and how we can work together to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further for public comment? CNN will close that portion of the meeting. Mr. Ruski, I think there are a few questions. Sure, absolutely. Sure.
Is Rhea still here? By chance, our student who came up with fencing, she's not here. All right. So anybody sees it before I do, we'll have a meeting with Mr. Bly and with Mr. Moore and we'll talk about what needs to be done. There's steps we take. We did the same thing when the three young men came last board meeting and talked about the boys volleyball. We've done some research, we're gonna report out the next board meeting on what we found on that and decide whether we're gonna move forward. And the second comment is, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and I know that it's a long night and there's a lot of things going on, but I want to thank everybody for coming out and making the comments that they did. Mr. President?
I think there's a few questions that were in there. Can we just address the driver's ed?
Sure, the driver's ed, I'm sorry, that was a mistake. The agenda should have said 10th grade, driver's ed isn't 10th grade, not 9th grade. That's why Ms. Mendez came snuck up here during one of the breaks.
Also, the math curriculum committee?
Do you want to come up and just give an update, Ms. Mendez, please?
Good evening. The math committee was supposed to meet last week, starting, we have a schedule through June to meet every two weeks. We have PM meetings and evening meetings to accommodate those who can come during the day and those who come in the evening. Due to the weather, the snow last week, it was postponed to this week, so we will be meeting Thursday. Again, all of the committee members are informed, our agendas are ready from now through June so that we can make recommendations to the board based on the committee.
Thank you. Any comments from Mr. Ruski?
I just want, there was one question that came up from a parent who emailed and asked, you know, why wasn't he selected? And it wasn't any reason that he wasn't selected. The criteria we were looking for cross-district representation, grade-level representation, and to make sure that schools across the district had a voice at the table, whether it be parent or staff members, meaning teachers, math teachers in particular. So when we were narrowing it down, we were looking at individuals and we were asking questions. Ms. Hughes was, you know, sending an email back to the parents saying, "Could you help?" She didn't indicate, you know, what your line of work was. And not that it made a difference either way, we didn't care what they do, but there were a couple individuals that had that kind of math background and those individuals we were encouraged to have them sit on there because they bring a different perspective. So just so everybody's clear on how that committee was formed, and again, it's gonna be a lot of work and I know it'll be done well, but we'll be giving results in the next couple of months at the board meetings.
Good, thank you. Comments from the board, let's start with Mr. Alper?
I would just respond to, I think it was Mr. Simpson. Hi, I was elected to represent the people of West Orange and I take that very seriously and it's a responsibility. I will vote on the superintendent. When I don't vote on something that comes up here, it's only because those were closed-session meetings that I was not in. It's nothing regarding the future or anything that I would have an input in, but I can't vote on a meeting that I didn't attend, but I can certainly vote on a contract or any other business before the board.
Mr. Mordecai?
Hello, everybody. I am glad to see such a large attendance tonight because this is a very important meeting. It was good to hear from a lot of the faculty and residents. I first would like to respond to Mr. Allen, I don't know if he's still here. But, you know, it's kind of odd when you take a conversation out of context. Mr. Allen asked me a specific question about recess and I told him about the chain of command. If you have a question about recess, you go to the principal. And he had a question about special services. I advise him again, you know, you go to the special services department. And only after you've gone through the chain of command and you've met that criteria, then you go to the superintendent and then the next level is to go to the Board of Ed. I did not say that Mr. Ruski's not responsible for anything, there is a chain of command. And I heard another parent as well tonight say something about recess. It's the same thing, you go to the principal when you have a building-level question, and that was my response to him. I just want to add, thank you to Mrs. Lab and Mrs. Brill who came up here before as former board members. You know, this job is very difficult. We were elected to do a job by the residents of West Orange and we take this role very seriously. We look at all the data before us, but there's also information that we cannot share with the public because it's a personnel matter. But there's other stories, and Mrs. Lab mentioned some of them, that the public may not know. The many weekends Mr. Ruski's at the hospital because his student is sick, the many families that are in need that, you know, we come together as a board and Mr. Ruski leads the way to get whatever resources are necessary for that parent. There's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that no one's aware of. What I do not like is, as Mrs. Cummings said, the online bullying. Most of you have never met me, you know, and probably never will again. So it's quite unfair for anybody in the public to just continually attack board members that they've never met and you have no idea what we go through. There's a lot of things we would love to share with you, but we can't. We're bound by statute because it's personnel or it's legal. And in the case of our protocol, the president speaks for the boards. If you have a question, the president would respond. But we do not hold Board of Ed meetings on Facebook. So if you throw 10 blogs and 200 comments on Facebook, you will not get a response from any board member or the board president. If you send an email to the board president, he will probably respond by email with the resources necessary, if we have them at the time, or it will get back to you. It's highly unfair for anyone to get on Facebook and say, "Nobody ever responds." I know the mayor responds, that's a whole different office. We have a whole standard of ethics and oath of office that we take that has nothing to do with town council and we have to abide by that. That being said, when Mr. Ruski came here in 2014, we went through a whole process of going through a search firm, as Mrs. Lab said, interviewing several, I mean Mrs. Brill, interviewing several candidates and getting down to the final selection. And unanimously, the board members chose Mr. Ruski because of his background in curriculum, technology, and the wealth of information he brought to the district. As many people have said tonight, they're going back 10, 15, 20 years, there was a lot of things that needed to be taken care of. When we had our interim superintendent, Mr. O'Neill, there's a lot of things he took care of for us, some things not so popular and that he was not liked for. And there's a continuation of some of the things that we've had to do that Mr. Ruski's now not liked for. What people don't understand is, anything Mr. Ruski's doing, the board has instructed him to do. The board handles the contract, not Mr. Ruski. You're mad at Mr. Ruski about the contract, you should be mad at the board. The board is in charge of the contracts, not Mr. Ruski. And he's not at the negotiations table. It's our negotiating committee and our negotiating council who's at the table negotiating contracts, not Mr. Ruski. So there's a laundry list of things I've seen over the weekend on the internet, placing blame at his feet. Sure, he's the captain of the ship because he's the CEO of the district, but the real blame stops with the board. We're in charge of the district. So I just say that to say that we share responsibility, but at the end of the day, the day-to-day activities that are happening in the classroom, those things are handled by the teachers and that's supervised by the principal of each building. And if you have an issue with anything in the classroom, you have to follow the chain of command. And if there's something that's not to your satisfaction, then you come to the superintendent. And if you don't like the superintendent's response, then you appeal to the board, but that's how it works here. Not everything is in Mr. Ruski's control. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Hello? Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and expressing your opinions. We all take our roles very seriously on the board and understand that this is a very important decision and we are deliberating and it's not an easy decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
I do, at first want to thank everyone for coming out with such passion, doing a great job of articulating a lot of different viewpoints, a lot of different positions, but I believe that all of it is genuine. I think that people are talking from their hearts, whether, and some are talking based on data, some are talking based on feelings, some are talking on relationships. But I think it's all good, I think it's all informative, I think it's all, that we need to hear all of this. And we're all taking this very seriously. Okay, you're impatient, we need to get this done? We're impatient. You have, the former board member should have some idea of the overwhelming deluge of daily calls, emails. I didn't even stop, I don't even go on social media now. That's surprising for me, right? I haven't even been on social media, except for an occasional, you know, happy birthday. The weight of this decision is tremendous. A lot has been accomplished and there are a lot of challenges and yes, there are a lot of things that were, quote, "pre-existing conditions." I call him Reverend Blanton, I don't know if it was Martin Malcolm or Medgar who was speaking tonight. I think it was all of them. But it was great to see people come up with passion, conviction, a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience. But we're taking all of that into consideration. And as Mrs. Lab pointed out, there's a lot that we know, a lot of great things and wonderful things that we know that happened, that go on behind the scenes that you all don't know. And as Mrs. Mordecai also pointed out, there's a lot that you don't know that we know, that we can't discuss because it's a personnel matter. So I can't get into talking about my views tonight on this thing or that thing, the state of the district, or this measurement or that. What I can tell you is that I hear you. I hear you, Mr. Simpson. I always heard you, Ms. Lab. You know, I hear you, Mr. Blanton, I hear you, Mr. Groves. And even smiling at me all night, of course I hear you. I hear the teachers who come up, I hear the parents who come up. I hear you, I'm listening critically. And for Mr. Gelsbauer, I always forget your name, one of the times we weren't looking at you is because we wanted to capture the thoughts that you were giving us. I have page after page trying to capture, is there some nugget of knowledge, is there some viewpoint that I've missed? This is a very, very difficult decision and more things weigh in the balance than I can share with you. Yeah, do we need to get our job done? Damn straight we do. We need to get it done. And we need to get it done so that our community isn't going through turmoil, so that our community isn't going through strife. Absolutely. We need to get it done, first and foremost, yes, Mr. Blanton, for our children, yes, Mr. Groves, for our children. And also for anybody who thinks that, okay, we know that there's politics that occurs in the district, but I will tell you, I can tell you for myself, yes, sometimes I do think about what my own daughter goes through because it informs my decision, just like when your kids were going through what they went through, or, Mr. Groves, when you pulled your daughter out, who's now at Yale. Your daughter's situation and what she went through informed you. My friend's children informs my judgment. My neighbor's children informs my judgment. As a scout leader, those children inform my judgment. I went on a camping trip to a frozen lake recently and found myself all of a sudden doing a fireside chat with 20 mothers I had never met before, asking me a billion questions about the district. Other parents and other children informed my judgment and I listened to them, more than you will ever know. I've been a basketball coach, I've been a soccer coach, I sucked at soccer, but I was a great basketball coach. I've dealt with hundreds of parents in this district and reached out to them and they've reached out to me. And I'm listening. I'm listening to you, I hear you. I hear the folks who have had children in the district that don't now, but you're taxpayers, you're citizens, you're interested and involved in our community, I hear you. And this weighs heavily and we're gonna get this done. And to Mr. Ruski, you know, we know you work hard and this, you know, our job as a board is to support the superintendent and help superintendent be successful. So we also have to look introspectively at ourselves and find out, what can we do better as the board for a district in providing direction, in providing accountability, in providing support, in providing guidance? What can we do better? And we need to look at that much greater depth and do it better as a team, yes. And by team, I don't mean everybody agrees with everybody, that's not what a representative democracy is about, but that we listen to each other, we respect each other, we take each other's views into account, and we do our best within our conscience to make the very best decision we can. And you may not like the decision we make, you may not like the decision I make. And if you wish to criticize it, I accept it, I deserve it. I'm the one who's sitting in this seat and I deserve that. And I will listen to it, whether or not I disagree with it or agree with it. But I can guarantee you that I will do my best to look at all the data, listening to all the opinions, looking back over the past three, four years, and do my best working with my colleagues to work together as a team and get our business done as a board. But I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Just my thoughts, I want to thank everyone again for sharing their opinions and thoughts on both sides of the argument. I believe there are hard conversations that need to happen in this district for the advancement and betterment of the children and of the district as a whole. And those are including difference, diversity of opinions and diversity of ideas. And once again, you know, I pledge, I'm sure the board feels that whatever we need to do to have those conversations, to take action, we're going to do that for the best advancement of the children in the district. Any final comments? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?
Let's make a motion to adjourn and to go back into closed session.
Second? No second? All in favor?
I'll say.
Mr. Mordecai?
Yeah, I.
Mr. Cavani, you have to read a statement about going back into close?
It's a continued personnel discussion we had at the earlier closed session.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, we're going to move back into close.